...us to order again.
Okay.
Hi.
Hey, Marty. Roll call, please?
I did.
Okay.
Jenkins, Lally, Vaughn, McGinn.
Rich Canall.
John McGinn.
Tad, where?
Okay. We have approval of agenda. We have approval of the minutes from February 11th and January 14th. And we have a public hearing. Proposed revisions to the land use ordinance. And we then have pending applications. Again, the proposed revisions to the land use ordinance. Item number two is Old Oliver Farms LLC. Under new applications, we have Brookside Estates final subdivision application and item two Tibbetts Farm Store conditional use pre-app. And we have some land use and subdivision ordinance revisions that we'll be looking at. Fire protection ordinance and a proposal to introduce equestrian centers and riding tables as conditional uses in the R4, followed up by the planner's report, at which time we will go home after the planner has made his report.
Early.
I have no idea, Marty, as much as I'd like to say yes. Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any items that we need to adjust on here?
What about minutes do we actually have?
We have February 11th.
February 11th.
But I don't see January 14th.
Those are still in progress.
Okay, so then we will strike. We will strike the January 14th minutes.
Or replace it with...
All we have is February 11th.
February 11th.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Any other items that need to be adjusted? Here we go. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Yeah.
And the opposition here? Motion carries unanimously. First item of business is the public hearing. Proposed revisions to the land use ordinance. A reorganization and reform of format of the existing land use ordinance with heading additions, spelling corrections, reference corrections, and additional text in areas requiring connectivity and clarification. I'm going to call this public hearing to order at 7:05. And I should ask if there are any questions from the public?
Is there any kind of presentation?
I don't, first off, I don't know if anybody has any questions that they may have or if Tad has any kind of presentation that he wants to make. But if there's nobody that has any questions, then there's no reason to have a presentation. That was my whole thought.
Well, just by what you have described and what the purpose of it is...
Okay, so we'll have Tad make a presentation?
No, I'm just saying by what the purpose of this is and just try to get it formatted and into place, if nobody has any questions, I say let's move it on.
Well, that was part of my question. Donna, do you have any questions?
Gee, hi. Yes, I actually have a little more than a question.
I thought that since you were here, you might.
Good guess. I'll identify myself, Donna DeKindren. I chair the comprehensive plan review committee. And first thing I'd like to congratulate you on having reformatted the land use ordinance into a much thinner document.
So sarcasm intended?
No sarcasm there at all. It is, in fact, thinner. We did the same with the comp plan, so trees have been saved here.
Thank you.
I do, however, have an issue that I'd like to discuss.
Is it related to...
It is, yes.
Okay.
On the second page of the table of contents. And I will make your lives easier rather than how you can describe all of this simply.
Thank you.
In quiet room. I'll put you over right now. And my concern centers around consistency between the format as it is arranged and the comprehensive plan. I have some answers. Everybody else is ready? I don't have any. The comprehensive plan is organized, as I have at the top of the page, basically growth areas and rural conservation. And in growth areas, there is the business district, or well, business, which is the BI district, mixed use, which includes downtown business district one and two, Alfred Road District, Gateway District, Townhouse Corner District, and Trailhead District is written in there, but we're going to recommend in June that we eliminate that because we couldn't get it to come together well. And then we have the residential districts, which at the moment in the comp plan are RD1 and RD2, R3 has been eliminated as of last June's town meeting. In your table of contents, you have the mixed, you have business districts. Let me just get my copy so I don't have to do this from memory. You have business districts as DB1, DB2, BI, and then the Alfred Road Business District. And my understanding, rationale there was to make it clear that those three mixed-use districts, DB1, DB2, and Alfred Road, would allow business, and that makes perfect sense. However, Gateway and Townhouse Corner District are under mixed-use districts, but they would also allow business just as DB1, DB2, and Alfred Road. So I didn't quite understand the reason for separating those. My, furthermore, rural conservation is not a mixed-use district. It's not a growth area district at all. So what I have proposed, which simply involves re-titling two of those sections and then just some renumbering, is to combine business and mixed-use districts and list all of those together. So that you have DB1, DB2, BI, Alfred Road, Gateway, and Townhouse Corner all together. So the message is clear that those are all places businesses can go. And the rural districts for rural conservation would then include Rural Conservation District, which we all know and love as R4, and then the Natural Resource Conservation District. And I have a little addendum at the bottom for some spelling and other errors, but I don't need to address those.
Hopefully those will all get correct. Those will all be the de minimis changes that the board is going to be able to make in terms of the rationale behind the districts, the way they are. These are the way the districts are set in the current ordinance, and we did not want to change any of the way it is set up right now. We simply wanted to reformat it to make it easier to locate various items. We could, at some point in the future, go through and move things around and present that as a change to the ordinance. This was specifically just to reformat and so that we could make it easier without doing any kind of a substantive change to the ordinance itself. So moving stuff from one area to, from section eight to section seven would, in my opinion, be a substantive change. The other issue that we had was that we looked at the number seven, the business districts. Those are specifically designed to be business districts, and they do have ancillary residential uses, as opposed to the Gateway and Townhouse, which are mixed uses. They have both residential and business in there, which is why it's listed this way. Don't know if that helps you or not.
I understand what you said, but I don't agree with you.
Okay.
And my lack of agreement lies in a couple of places. First of all, simply moving them from one point to another, to me, does not constitute a substantive change because you're not changing what people can do in those districts.
But you're changing the emphasis on those two businesses. By moving them into a business district, you are changing the emphasis. Right now, their residential and business is allowed.
Which is precisely why I suggest changing the title of section seven to business slash mixed use, because that makes it clear that all of them are together, and they're all places that businesses can establish themselves. And that reflects the intention of the comprehensive plan. And if you've referred to comp plan, which I'm sure you all carry a copy of at all times, there is a section that defines mixed-use districts, and all of those districts are listed under that heading. So what I have at the top of the page there, what's in the comp plan now, shows you how it is arranged in the comp plan. So that one mixed-use district, whether it's Gateway District or DB1, is not distinguished in the comp plan from another based upon the definition of mixed-use district. Now, later on, they're distinguished from each other with the details, which then you folks take another level and make it even more specific. But in terms of the logic of somebody coming in and looking at this table of contents and saying, okay, where can I put a business? By putting all of those 7.1 through 7.6 together, that tells them where and how they can establish a business, with one not being different from another until you get to the details, how big a business, what type of business. So that's the reason for that. And as I said, and I understand not wanting to change the order of a bunch of things, but what you have now in your table of contents does not reflect what the comprehensive plan intends or what it says. And I see that as a potential source of confusion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from anybody in the public? Here?
Well, I do agree with Donna, because I know that when you're looking through either the comprehensive plan or the other plans, and you start with the table of contents, that is confusing, because it says that I can put my businesses here, but mixed use I'm not sure of, so I have to go do some searching. Where actually what she proposed, to me, makes it look very, a lot more simple than what it is now. A lot less confusing.
Any other comments from the public? Public, you're on the board. Hearing no other comments at 7:14, I will close the public hearing. Pending applications, first item of business. Look at this. Proposed revisions to the land use ordinance. A decision to forward the proposed land use ordinance revisions to the Board of Select for consideration at a special town meeting. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
We do that today. We can make changes afterwards. The reason we did not do it is so that we were not trying to think, or anybody else think, somebody was trying to pull a fast one on us.
Okay.
That's the reason why we left it as is. Point taken as what was presented, but the fact is that we're not pulling any fast one. We're doing what we said we were going to do.
Good point, Marty. Comments, Donna?
We have to look at it.
They're on camera, John. John's commenting, yes.
Yes, absolutely. No, I think Donna's proposal makes sense, and it does make it consistent with the comprehensive plan. I tried to bring that up at the last meeting. I don't think it involves much more than just changing some numbering in the headings. So I don't see that as a fast one. It's just a way you organize, and that's really what we're doing, is reorganizing the ordinance to have it make sense. But it, you know, the ordinance does have to follow the comprehensive plan, so I do support what she proposes.
But like I said, who's the horse and who's the cart? Is it the comprehensive of the horse and where the cart?
It's what comes after the horse that counts.
That's the cart.
Not directly.
I'm not going to comment.
I'm not doing composting.
Please don't comment on anything.
I'm not doing composting.
I'm comfortable leaving it as is. I think, you know, that section six residential has the primary residential district. Seven is the primary business district. Eight is a little bit of a catch-all, but, you know, if that's how it was set up, I'm comfortable leaving it.
Well, I will say one last thing in support, and that is that when I brought it up, Tad mentioned that this was also a sales tool for the town as far as attracting businesses and having more places, obviously, to put businesses, as far as the heading is concerned, would enhance that sales tool.
But I think most people looking at, you know, if you're coming at it from a real estate perspective or consulting perspective, you're going to recognize mixed use as a potential to have business. But what it'll also do is somebody looking to put in, you know, a larger scale commercial probably won't spend much time sifting through the mixed use section. You know, they'll know that's not really going to be viable for what they're looking to do.
Yeah, I agree with you, Marty. I think right now the majority of the prop owners are residential right now, and if, as we were working on this, it was always talked of as mixed use. If we all of a sudden lump into just business, I think we might get some resistance to that. I think we might, like Tad might have said, feel like we pulled a fast one on it.
Oh, but we're not really lumping it into business. We're just putting it...
Well, that's, we know that.
Because it's already business. It's just that where it shows up in the table of contents is what it amounts to.
But in the table of contents, if it says business mixed use, then we have a mixed use in the DB1, a mixed use in the DB2? We don't. In the DB1 and the DB2, it is primarily business, and residents are ancillary to the fact that you must have a business there first. In the Gateway District and the Townhouse Corner District, you do not. You can have a house and have a business in it, or you can just have a house. In the DB1 and the DB2, you can't. It has to have a business. And I think that's one of the reasons that I would say it's a good idea to have them split up, because it helps to identify what's going on. And then, ladies and gentlemen, it is up to you. What is your pleasure?
I'd stay in my place.
Yeah, but we need a motion to send it on to the selectmen.
I said leave it as it is. That's my motion.
So you're making a motion to leave this the way it is?
Yes.
Okay.
Subject to change at town meeting when we have the second town meeting. Changes to be done then.
Well, and I would say subject to, or do you mind me amending your motion, Marty? To the comments that Donna made at the bottom of her handout regarding either the spelling and... Yeah, those are good catches.
Yep.
Is that a second? That would be a second.
A motion has been made and seconded to forward, as amended, to forward this document as amended to the selectmen for inclusion at a special town meeting that they will call at their discretion. Hopefully sooner than later.
Prior to our regular time.
Any other discussion? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Four to one.
I would prefer to be more closely following the comprehensive plan.
Horse and cart.
Okay. Motion carries four to one. Next item, item number two. Old Oliver Farms LLC conditional use, conditional use application. A proposal to institute an animal husbandry use and raise domesticated farm animals on an 80-acre farm site located on the former Oliver Farm located at 475 Mountain Road, tax map 16, lot 12 in the R2 zone. Mark Fenet, DVA, Old Oliver Farm LLC is the owner applicant, and Alex Shepherd is the designated agents.
I have the applicant here.
We don't have anybody here.
Can I make a motion that we put this aside and move on to the other, the other applicants?
We can table this to the end of the meeting, and if they show up, we can address the issue.
Question.
Yes, Marty.
So is Mr. Planner not a busy man coming?
I don't know.
That's why I just asked the question.
When he dropped off maps last Friday, we had discussions that he would be on the agenda. And so, it was my understanding. I haven't talked to him since.
We can still act on it, but I'd rather...
I would rather he was here. We didn't have time for him to get a answer.
We're drawing him running.
No, I'd still say we table it to the end of the meeting.
To the end of the meeting.
Until he shows up at his meeting.
A motion has been made to table. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to table this to the end of the meeting. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
No.
Motion's unanimous.
I'd rather figure it wouldn't be going along the way.
New applications. Brookside Estates Final Subdivision. Application, conditional use application, proposal for a 10-lot cluster subdivision and age-restricted community on 11.98 acre lot located at 182 Log Cabin Road, tax map 32, lot 14C in the R3 and Shoreland Overlay Districts. J Group LLC is the owner applicant, and the owner's agent is Walter Dunkey of PH2M. Do we know where they are?
Yeah, they're here.
They're here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking for...
Hide now back.
I'm looking for J group.
Oh, he's in Florida.
He's looking for the cars.
He took the kids to Disney World.
And he left us here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Walt took the day off, so it's only me.
That's a big surprise. He didn't take us with him.
I talked to him this afternoon.
Okay.
I talked to him just...
We're so used to not seeing you, and Jason is usually...
I missed one meeting.
We've only had two.
It's not like Jason.
We've only had two.
If you're not going to pull your weight.
Okay. We have a couple of issues. Do we have the final covenants?
No.
We do not have the final covenant covenants. Okay.
Have him move up.
Yeah, he was working on the final covenants because there was a few things that were added in the verbiage. You're supposed to have that back there.
Okay.
We do have the revised maps. The issue regarding, we received the communications from Warden Kern in January, the January memo, where they've talked to the C.D. Mahara, their geologists, had talked to the C.D. Mahara geologist, and they've come to the conclusion of, they made two recommendations, one recommendation, as you saw in their report, which I referenced in my report as well, which was that they started concerns about lots one and 10, and therefore they posed two options. One was to either redesign the system to limit one and 10, or to put in the, to drill the wells prior to the sale of lot, sale of lot 10, before the building, a building composition on lot one, in which the casing would go down bedrock in EDC. And they came to the agreed conclusion that that would be a good way to ensure that there's potable water in those lots, in that if the water, if that failed at that point and they could not get adequate potable water, considering there's only one location to drill on both those lots, they would know when the applicant would have to make changes accordingly at that time, that the lot would not be transferred until potable water was proven in that particular location. I've talked to, talked to the applicants, they would be willing to do the drill, the drill. If that's amenable with the plan.
That's the drilling with the casing going down 15 feet? This is the second option?
Casing going to bedrock.
No, ground to...
Well, no, because they say install grounded casings at least 15 feet into the bedrock.
Okay.
Okay, and that's what I was curious. I was talking about drilling it down into the bedrock, right?
Yeah, they usually set them all in the bedrock anyways.
Yeah.
That's all the drill was.
I know about ground wells, whatever I could read on there.
It's like using a saw instead of a pencil.
Sorry, I can use a pencil. My wife doesn't let me play with power tools.
Yeah, they're all full started in the bedrock. They're all drilled and then pressed right down into bedrock.
Okay.
So that wouldn't be an issue. I mean, every one of them was going to be the same way. So they didn't ask you for anything special.
Prior to the silly lots, to be sure.
Just that lot 10, they wanted that. After the road would be put in, construction would be started, they wanted lot 10 to be drilled, water tested, right?
Lot one and 10 is lot one.
I thought lot 10 was the only one on their discussion.
Lot one and 10 was lot one and 10. So it's the two front lots, basically.
Okay.
That's what they were talking about. Yeah, I thought it was 10 too. I think you read in the report it was one.
Yeah, I thought the walk was on there, just lot 10.
No, I checked it over. I talked to all the names, and yeah, it is lot one. So it would be those two lots. So that, it's the board's decision, and that's what...
When we first had our look at this and we wrote up our concerns about groundwater, I posed the question specifically, can we make it a requirement, a condition, that the applicant shows that there's water quality there? And the answer was no, it's not in our ordinance, but now we're being told yes, that we can make it a condition.
Well, what you're doing is before it was, if you knew you could get some potable water, asking for quality reports in order to something that we could do prior to. But this is a situation where, right now, the lots are marginal. There's a very small window in which to drill in those lots in order to make them usable lots. The proposal is to pre-drill, to drill prior to the sale of lot, to prove, to show that there is, in fact, potable water on that site.
But that was, I mean, the conditions haven't changed. This is just a technicality, but the conditions haven't changed from that very first discussion. At that point, we were told that we didn't have the authority to require water in, you know, certain water volumes or certain water qualities, but now we're being told that we can. So I'm just confused. Either we can or we can't.
The reason I thought of that is because, see, we're not the engineers, and the engineers kind of are telling what their opinion is. See, their opinion is more valuable than what we think.
But that doesn't, just to get, I don't want to spend too much time on a technical issue, but that doesn't change the fact that the board can or cannot ask for water quality. It doesn't depend upon whether somebody decides it's marginal or not. Either we can or we can't.
7:14? No, stay out of the zoning ordinance. Oh, okay. You're right. It's a substantial difference.
Because whether there is or isn't water, that falls back on us. It doesn't fall back on us.
And that was the explanation at the very beginning, that it's the applicant, if they don't supply proper water, that's their problem and not ours.
It's the board's job to do a subdivision review to ensure that, one of the things it's going to have to do in the fund is to say there's some potable water supplying this, on this project. Now, how you arrive at that decision is the board's discretion. So basically to say at this point, we have, we have reasonable, we have reasonable evidence to indicate that there could be a concern about being able to supply potable water for every single lot, and therefore the board is within its authority in following the requirement that there be potable water on there, to ask for a higher level of quality assessment, which is basically what's happening here. We're not asking, as part of the, as part of the project, we're not asking them to drill now to prove that water quality is there. We have reason to believe that there could be a threat to water quality because of the configuration of the lots and the handling, because of the results of the hydro geo study. So this is a reasonable thing, a reasonable solution for the board to proceed, and I think do it before, because you've got to guarantee to the potential buyers that there is a potable water supply. And you have to supply evidence that there is water.
It's fine with me, because that was my original contention. I was just confused, so.
No, you were right.
Again, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it because it's an important issue, but...
I have a question about this. Rather than make the condition that before they can sell it, they have to have what they want, we just make that a condition of the approval period? Have you...
Well, we won't be able to do that, because we'll have to build a road going into it before we even get a well truck to lot 10.
Right.
So, I mean, we're going to have substantial amounts of funds tied up before the well truck ever even get to that location. So I think it's...
I think it's fair to do it prior to the, to the condition of sale.
Okay. I can see it before the sale went...
I mean, every one of them lots have to have water quality before we can sell them anyways. I mean, we can build, I mean, a 10-lot, equip a home on there, but we can't sell it unless the water passes. If it doesn't pass, it's...
Mike, turn it to you, is if it doesn't pass, then what do you do with those lots?
We're being told by C.D. Mahara that they're backing us 100 percent. They have no issues. So that's why we're adamant by pushing this along, because they see no issues. They say it's tight, but they've seen projects that are a lot tighter than this. And they've done enough water research behind it. We've talked to Woodson Mulgill, and he feels more than comfortable. So, I mean, me and Jay, we've really got them kind of bent over a barrel because we're riding their reputation on this. And they guarantee us that it's going to work, so.
They've seen...
We're going in there, that's above my pay grade.
They've seen situations tighter than this.
That's what they're saying.
I will tell the board this, that one of the things that I asked our attorney to pass on to J Group's attorney was also a covenant that would be in the open space section there, that we allow it for clearing, because it's very strict covenants of clearing that it... because it's very strict covenants of, of clearing of that open space. That the open space would allow for the, uh, clearing for a, on, for a community septic field or a community well, if it was ever necessary. So, what would be the alternative, if, if everything went south there, at least they have, they would be able to have an alternative site, um, that could do that, basically, yeah.
Where would that be though?
And the open, the open space would be off, and they'd have to probably pipe it there, yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on the cul-de-sac.
Either that, or else, quite frankly, the other thing you could do, I mean, you'd say you could have a community well in one of these lots.
Yeah, but would, um, but would that require a new, um, water quality tester, or-
Oh, yeah.
Erosion control, or all, anything else?
The plan board would be, have to inform the situation, if they changed any of the infrastructure there, they, they would come back and tell you, but it would probably be a emergency situation, a hurry up situation.
That actually would, would actually resolve a lot of these issues if there was a community septic field that would pull away from all the wells, but we're not requiring that, no.
Used to require.
Yeah, we used to, this is actually probably the, the best case for requiring it that I've seen.
The board would, but the applicant, they have to, the board would be comfortable that, that there is potable water, and there's not gonna be impacted by the, by the onsite septic. They've done their study, they show that there is, there might be, the concern isn't, isn't infiltration necessarily from, from the, uh, the F1. It's not a nutrient loading concern as much as it is assaulting the filtration or wetland issue. And it's also an issue of, there's such a narrow window, on, you know, you can drill here, that's about it. There's only five feet, five, ten feet, you know, way there. There's only one place on each lot that you can drill. So consequently, that's where the only concern is, if they come up empty in that one location, which can happen theoretically, that's where, that's where the, the pre-drilling really resolves that issue. If it were, if the worst case scenario were to occur, and, uh, CD Mahara, uh, just didn't foresee something, or just, you know, some, some strange fracturing of the bedrock in that one location, if it doesn't get adequate water, gets no water whatsoever, then they'd have to make some modifications, either provide a community well, um, or, uh, that's probably what they would, they would probably do, shared well situation, or two wells, or put a well on an adjacent property, or put it out and, and pipe it. Put a, put a pump and pipe it out? And we keep, you know, you feel it, so what, five hundred feet away?
There's a lot of bedrock there too, so.
There's a lot of bedrock, right? Bedrock is in fact an opening factor in that location.
Because they told us worst case scenario is what their, their professional opinion is, we're gonna hit salt if we get it. And they were giving us quotes on different-
Yes.
-technology systems that take the salt out of the water, and salt-
Our own system. The salt, that salt goes all the way out there.
No, that's, they said worst case scenario, is what they were telling us.
They have the worst, worst case scenario.
That's, that, yeah, that's really, no. Right, we know salt, but shouldn't be down there. But anyway.
You live over a glacial, slow water out.
So we have, we have two options recommended by Woodton Kern. One is for them to redesign the, uh, of the project, to move the wells away from the road and wetland. And number two is for them to drill the wells down into fifteen feet of bedrock, prior to the sale and prove that the water is potent. Which one of those options?
I'll second one.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
And I believe the applicant is comfortable with that, right?
So it could be two lots, one and ten?
One and ten, yeah. Did I get a motion on that?
We did make the motion, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you had, I didn't hear it.
You asked which one, and I said that's the one I like, and that's the one-
Well, you have to, oh, that's a motion, I didn't hear that.
Okay, I had not heard the motion.
I'll second your motion.
So the motion has been made and seconded to go with option number two from Woodton Kern, that they drill wells on lots one and ten, and install grounded casings at least fifteen feet into the bedrock prior to the sale of the property, so as to ensure a potable and protective water supply to both lots.
Applicant is, is that, is-
And the applicant is, is amenable to that.
Correct.
Is there any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of that?
You seconded that.
Yes, you did. All those in favor of that motion?
Yes.
Any other, anybody opposed?
Yeah.
You're opposed? Okay, four to one, I just, I wasn't sure, because you handled it. The planner has suggested homeowners' covenants provide an exception. I hope it does, because if it doesn't, there's gonna be an issue when, if, if it should ever fail.
Well, they have to come back to the, the planning board and amend the covenants, pointing out, I don't think that's something we wanna, they want to, or we wanna, uh, follow along with the event of emergency.
The next item that we need to look at is a public hearing in two weeks, on March tenth.
Question, we still haven't had the, uh-
Covenant hearing?
Covenant again.
Right, we still don't have that.
Because we usually have that in place, correct, or is that for final?
That's for, we need those for final, if we don't have them, then we'll have, we won't be able to proceed further, but we can have the public hearing.
Okay, so, yes, because sometimes after a public hearing, we have the time, that's why I try to ask that question.
Well, that, that will-
It's all contingent on whether they support.
That's right, if they give us the documents, then we can have a motion that, that night.
Subject to review by our-
Okay, it's, I will tell you this, Marty, I'm not even playing middleman in this, it's the two, just like with the two hydrogeologists.
No, I was gonna say-
It's the two attorneys talking to each other, and when Aaron tells me that everything's good, I'm good.
So I'll, I'll make the motion that we schedule for March tenth.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to have a public hearing on March tenth at seven PM.
Subject to whether.
Yes, okay, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Motion's unanimous.
We're like-
Now, performance assurance, is that part of the board's-
You can make that decision, you guys are-
Yeah, they're supposed to be getting you guys over a letter.
Yeah, okay. So it's gonna be a letter, or it's gonna be a bond?
No, it's gonna be a letter.
It is gonna be a letter, okay, because Jason was talking about bonds.
Yep.
I'm not real fond of bonds.
As long as, Stan has all the paperwork?
No, we already get, that's all covered, you should be getting that given out.
Okay, good.
Okay, good.
Is that a drawdown one, or is that just fixed for a year?
Whatever you want to do, I mean, he's, was supposed to be calling you. Um, you prefer the drawdown one you were calling?
No, I prefer not the drawdown one.
Okay.
Because they have to keep, they have to keep issuing letters of credit, and every time they do that, every time they do a drawdown on that letter of credit, you gotta pay an extra for that. So, if you want to keep paying for that, they draw you-
No, we've spent enough. What, do you think Walt's not here?
Okay, we'll see you in two weeks.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. I need to watch you. Tibbetts Farm.
You, you had, um, Oliver here.
Right.
Yeah, we, we moved you guys to the end, because you weren't here when we started on, um, this is for the old Oliver farm.
To the end?
So, we put you at the end of the agenda, because you weren't here in return.
One more?
Just one more.
Just one more?
Okay. It's another farm.
Okay.
It's another farm.
Item number two, Tibbetts Farm Store. Conditional use pre-application, proposal to establish a farm retail operation in a four hundred and eighty square foot existing building at the McDonald Farm located at nine sixty-seven Alfred Road, Tax Map Eight, Lot Eight, in the R four district and Shoreland Overlay District. Scott McDonald is the owner, and Jonathan Tibbetts is the applicant.
And Mr. Chairman, I have to refuse myself, I have a letter to the applicant.
Not a problem, thank you very much.
You're still set? You're here, you just keep quiet, you can sit, but keep quiet.
Do I have to make it look official?
Come on, Marty, you remember that one, from the training.
Okay, is there anybody here to make a presentation?
Might supply the board with my presentation.
I have no idea how to use that pedal way.
It's all part of that packet, all part of the pre-application.
Do we have everything?
Uh, yeah, uh, the, uh, the issue here is, the applicant is, is, uh, is wishing to put a farm retail in at this particular site. As the Ball Farm, for those of you who don't remember, that that is, that's just down the road from John, down the road. It's to the west on one eleven, it is a cluster of barns, and Scott McDonald's property, you know, Scott McDonald's property. It's the bar, set of barns where the knights were selling Christmas traces.
Oh, yes, okay, okay.
So that's where it is. The milk room, tell me if I'm wrong on that, the milk room's the white building that's attached to the-
It's the cement building.
That's the cement building, that's where they intend, they actually put the facility, must have outside, side display it looked like, right?
So it was-
Outside display, like, outside display, or is it all gonna be inside?
No, it'll be inside.
It's all gonna be inside the milk room. Okay, and the, uh, the issue is, um, uh, there's basically two issues. It's kind of a unique situation, the Tibbetts family farms mainly in Wyman, and Scott McDonald, uh, basically, uh, has in, in, uh, in Arundel, and they formed a partnership. Um, this could be part of a farm retail, of course, is in, it's the owners' produce, or either owners' land, or, uh, both on and off-site. And so the issue is, they formed a partnership, so they could use the Tibbetts, uh, produce, and I believe you also said you're gonna form about an acre, did you say, on-site?
Yeah.
For you needed to, we're gonna put some, something over there, we've talked this, doing something, I'm not sure what. So, that's issue one, issue two is, there's gonna be parking, and you, as you saw on the site plan, that was, uh, it was a, uh, it's just a sketch site plan, it's in the back of the packet, colored, I said colored. There's gonna be, uh, the lawyer said a part of this, they're gonna have to grade that whole section, and there's a tree there. They're gonna grade to the back of the building, uh, and provide what I guess is about twenty-two spaces, you know, they haven't laid it out.
I also, I have some three D pictures of what I kind of propose.
Would the chairman like those submitted to the board?
Yes, please.
Johnny. Charlie, can I maybe add? This is where Paul, or across here where Paul Cage is painting.
Yes, Johnny's, Johnny's old farm.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just-
I just said, so we'll just circulate it.
Big red ones.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, it's two barns. Yeah, I'm, I think I was right, but just get my picture. Get a line.
I guess if you don't get what the graphics, three D drawings right off, it's a nightmare.
I know.
So.
So that's the question, that's the part of the area that we brought up, just for a better view than the, the two D.
So before they submit the app, before they go through the application, because obviously we've gotta do some grading, and we're gonna do some drainage, and the biggest issue there, quite frankly, is not really gonna be in our ballpark, it's gonna be in DOT's, is that, we all are familiar with DOT, have you talked to them yet?
Talked with DOT, what they explained to me, I have a letter, um, is I can get a change of use permit, but there was already an acre in lot one eleven there for that property, and I didn't, I didn't think that I needed a traffic study, because the way they drive the traffic study was a hundred trips in a peak hour.
Yeah.
They thought that I'd be nowhere near that. So they thought the application process would be pretty simple, they want a sidewalk, and I got a letter on, you know.
Was that from Joe, or was that?
Yeah, it's from Tim, said he, like, tried to do the phone call thing, trying to find somebody to talk to. That's to a-
Sorry, it's, it's good. It's good. All right, good, okay, terrific. So, yeah, that, the issue's gonna, that's good news, they don't have to do this traffic study. Didn't think they would, I think they get a hundred in a peak hour anyway. The issue for them is probably gonna be geometry with improvements to it. So if they have their own accurate ways to modify, that's a good sign. That is, you know, that was one of the concerns there.
In the, in the partnership that the two farms have come into to put the application, has there been a, like, a, an LLC formed or anything to, to formalize that, that that would be the applicant, would be that entity, instead of just, just one of the farms?
We haven't done anything, we're kind of feeling the waters out here.
Yeah.
Or we really do anything.
I just, yeah.
I, I need to tell you what the ordinance says, because it creates a problem for, farm retail, a permanent structure used to store, display, and sell agricultural and animal husbandry, husbandry products produced on-site and other lands owned, farmed by the principal owner. If there's a, if there's an LLC, then the, the LLC does not own the property that is being farmed. If you own the property and you're hay, you, you can't bring stuff in from somebody else onto site to sell it.
Yeah.
As a primary product, and I don't know how you're gonna resolve that issue.
The problem most farmers have in Southern Maine is we don't grow all our crops on the ground. So, if I grow corn or pumpkins on the McDonald property, I, that property isn't big enough for me to grow all my crops there. And that's-
Or sustain.
Or sustain, you know. So that's-
And I'm not, I, I understand that, and I sympathize, but I just don't know how we're gonna be able to resolve that particular issue. Marty?
Mr. Chairman, I think we've run through this one time before in a different section, okay? When we had the, uh, I think the Lamas, okay? And how they turn out, we're just working through with the co-op, okay, and how they had their wolf, and sell them their wolf, but it wasn't always necessary coming from one farm, where they pulled things together. And it was allowed that way.
Okay.
So I'm using that as possibly as a basis.
I, I remember that.
And that's, and that's sort of my basis with the, the question about the LLC, is if you've got two primary entities in the LLC, and they're, they're both producing for the, the farm stand, then, you know, that's, that's the owner.
Okay.
To me, I, I mean, I think-
I, I understand that, that's the owner of the, the, the business, but the-
And if they, and if the primary entities of the LLC are, are, then, you know, harvesting the crops, I, you know, I think that's-
Okay.
I can, I can be behind that in the-
But I don't think they need an LLC, I mean, I'm just saying-
I, unfortunately, I think, I think it would be in their best interest to, to do something formally so that we could, could support them.
Okay, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not throwing my apologies to me and the lawyers, I mean, uh, but like I said, there was something along the way where we, it was like a co-op, okay?
Yeah.
Right, but it was a-
Yeah, but I was saying, if they're both together-
Marty, it was a little different, because she was taking all of the fleece or wool or whatever it is, the Lamas, and sending them out, and they were sending her back a finished product. She just wasn't able to differentiate how much of this was hers and how much was somebody else's. So, I, it's a slight, slight difference.
She was also getting somebody else's too at the same time, because I'm saying, they're sharing, and they're also sharing together with the wolf, they're sharing together with this.
I don't know, ask the, um, town planner his thoughts on it. I, when I read this, it, it seems to read to me as if the land itself is, is, uh, would be by, farmed by the principal owner, and that, you know, you can have other stuff, uh, within prepared packaged foods, baked goods, things like that, that could be, uh, manufactured or brought in from some other place, but the principal purpose of the farm stand was for you to sell product that you raised on your land.
Right.
I'd, I'd love to find some way to work around it, because I think that this is one of those things that we look at and say, yes, this is, it's just not the way they order this.
Another question, one I might-
Hang on, Marty.
I think when, when you, when we devised this, obviously, this was an opportunity to allow, um, we only had farm stands, which were limited to two hundred square feet, and they were limited to seasonal products, and they only could be opened in a hundred and twenty days, or not even ninety days. It was just not a way to support agriculture and the community. We wanted to come up with a way to do it, though, we wanted to make sure that it wasn't, it wasn't a situation where, where somebody comes in from out of state, or, you know, basically uses, uses, sets up a stand, you know, throws in a couple of squash and says, okay, and imports all the other stuff from all over the country. You know, pulls up corn from Iowa and so forth, and sells it, basically makes it into a grocery store, or-
And, and that's where I would-
That, that's where we were going with this, and we wanted to kind of limit it to the owner, because most of the agriculture we've been running into is, you know, local agriculture that's being done by, by, most farmers have been asking, can I get one of these on my farm? I think one of the first ones we gave was Finklepot, which was doing their community garden, um, in which you had to- Um, in which at the time, they didn't know. They had, they had it under contract. But, um, if they, if they had some sort of LLC or some formal arrangement, I think that's, that might meet that ownership status, but it's up to the board.
Uh-huh.
It's really up to the board to define how to interpret that ownership. In this particular case, I think they're, if they could give us a partnership agreement or something.
Yep, e- even if it's not an LLC.
Yeah, and I, I threw LLC out there, that's what came to mind, that you talked to an attorney and come up with something else and it could be just as workable.
A partnership.
Should the chairman?
Yeah. Yeah, Marty.
Question we also threw out was the farmer's market. Okay, that was one of the things that we were talking about along the way in town.
But we didn't go down that route.
I'm just, I'm just saying, is the, cause I think it's in the, listed as a farmer's market somewhere. Did we have that? Under listings anywhere? I've got some.
No.
Okay.
And that's, and that's the issue. It's not, it's not listed in there.
I think the, one of the reasons was.
Do we have a definition?
No, we don't.
We do not have a definition for farmer's market.
I think Jamie's solution is probably the best. Either create an LLC or formalize the partnership with, with, with partnership documents. And then we could, we could work from there. Yeah, I, I.
I think that would work really well. I mean, the scale, what, what they're proposing seems to be a great asset to that, that part of one eleven, so.
As long as they don't get killed.
Yeah, please don't.
By DOT, especially DOT.
Now, in, in reading your notes, Ted, you've made them aware of the, the parking surface limitations?
Yeah, there's limitations on that, yeah.
Right.
And it depends how late, how off, how late you wanna operate. So we have a seasonal, we require paved parking for, in some way.
That's what she's having, you know.
Yeah. So you're not gonna be there open during Christmas, some trees or anything?
No, we're gonna run it basically sometime July to sometime middle November.
Okay.
Oh, well, if they went July and went to, and did Christmas, they'd be in.
Still.
Still, yeah, the Christmas trees and.
Yeah, because it's, it's eight months.
Christmas tree.
We don't do.
Okay, well. And then that.
Have you ever thought about?
And the beef and pork, I gotta stick, that might be your, well, and season do that too.
The other thing is, what requirements do they need for portable water and sanitary if it's open to the public?
Well, they don't have the necessary, they're not an eatery, they're not provided. They don't have to provide a bathroom for the public.
Okay.
You have to have, you know, that, if they probably want water supply there anyways.
I just didn't know, that's why I'm just asking for that. Fuck.
You could be like.
Well, I know we got buckets.
The other farm stores we've run, we haven't had water there, we haven't needed to.
Okay.
Um, we've always got away with the water supply.
Yeah.
And, and done that.
I was thinking you could be like, uh, Alpha Sports up in, in Limerick, where he's got an outhouse.
Yeah.
Where he sends his clients up to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but outhouses are illegal anymore.
Not up there, they are.
They were illegal here in Arundel.
Sorry to hear that, Marty.
At any rate, okay, so you, do you have any other questions about?
On the application, um, some of the stuff I think I don't need to do, I guess. Um, I really, I obviously don't need to fill out the, the, or, um, the whole septic studies and, and that. I, I kinda need a direction of what you guys want me to do.
If, if there is stuff in there that you think that you do not need, you can ask us to waive that requirement. And, and if the ordinance lets us, and, and it's not required, then be good.
So in that application sheet, if you notice there, it says, request waiver?
Yeah.
Or does not apply, you check that out.
Yeah.
You're wary of why you don't need it or why you don't think you need it.
Cause pretty much the only thing I'm trying to change to that site is make parking.
That, that you'll probably need some engineering on it somewhere. Okay, okay. Um, but I think that the, the board, we, we hope the board to go and take a look at the site. So before they spend any money on applying, if there's anything that's of particular concern or interest that the board can alert them to or you can see if there's anything that you're in a particular concern about that they need to address in the application, this is the time for the board to do that.
So if we, if we did that, could we hold that as a formal sidewalk?
I would do it as a formal sidewalk.
No, and then we'd have to do it as a form, would, would that suffice for that, once it, once a official site plan application gets filed?
Not required to do a sidewalk, we just historically do sidewalks. So, and if you recall, many times we do our sidewalk in the front, in the, pre-application.
Right.
We did it at J Group.
True.
You know, so, um, and it's, the sidewalk is for both parties.
Yeah.
For us, you know.
How much notice do we need to publish a sidewalk?
Three days.
Three days, okay. So I'm, I'm wondering if we could do it on March tenth at like six o'clock?
That's next meeting.
That's the next meeting.
Do we for that, so that?
Once daylight changes.
I'm not sure what anybody else looks like, but I really don't have that time.
Utah?
Yes.
I'm not available next weekend.
Okay.
So, to, you know.
That's, that's why I had said.
Saturday morning.
All right, it's, it's two weeks. We could do it before the meeting here, if we did it at six o'clock.
Once daylight changes.
It should be like.
Kids.
End of, end of March.
End of March, okay.
Doesn't have a water to let drop?
No, I sure have a half.
Weather permitting. Hey, weather permitting.
I mean, it's, it's still light at five, five thirty when I drive home. In a couple of weeks, it'll, it'll push back.
Yeah, it'll take, it'll take twenty minutes to really look at the site.
Yep. I just have one, uh, concern about the site distance, is that a straightaway right there?
Yeah.
So no problem on that.
Yeah.
The building's right by.
Yeah, the building, we stepped back and, you know, spent quite a bit of time looking, kind of down the road, seeing where visibility could. Um, and by dropping, um, on the three D plan, we're actually gonna drop the grade there a little bit and, and it's pretty easy to get in.
Good visibility right there.
Yeah, yeah, with a little light going out the road helping that allow the traffic.
Who's that?
Uh, Hill Road.
It's flashing now.
It's hundred.
It was fully red, it probably would be stopped by the time we get.
Roughly how far past Hill Road are you guys?
Before.
You're before?
Before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Well, let's put it this way, if you remember when we have the, the run the base, okay? Say out at the top of the hill, see that there's fire in the next one.
Yep.
Alright, so it's.
It's a good thousand feet if not.
Between where Limerick and Hill Road, how many of them are left?
Oh, yeah, yep.
Alright.
Yeah, and there's plenty, the, the light on that, that bar is driving me nuts. You're driving home at nights, it goes off and then it comes on and it goes back off and it's like, and it's not even, it's, it does it in the daytime. I have no idea why the light does those things.
Try sleeping. Our window's right there.
Okay, uh, I, we need a motion for, for March tenth, for a second, unless you guys wanna do it at some other point.
March tenth is what day?
It's a Thursday, it's in two weeks.
They'll make a motion for it.
Second. Motion's been made in second, if you do a sidewalk on March tenth at six P M.
You should be able to have a orange.
Okay. I'll be there. I'll stop on the way, on the way back in from the office.
John won't come.
No.
No. Raj, I'll be here by then.
Okay.
Okay, so we should be able to make it, okay?
That's why I was asking.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, March tenth, six P M.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Folks.
And take, you wanna keep, us, keep those pictures or you wanna take?
You can keep them, I have a visual.
Sure?
Yeah.
Art's right.
Yep, I'll, I'll have him over to Marty, uh, Ted, to Ted. Yeah, you have Ted, he's Marty.
I was looking at his.
There'll be our Ted.
Okay.
Here.
Yeah, John can bring him over as he walks.
Well, he's, yeah, he's, you wanna be the taxi on the camera, you be the taxi.
Okay, now. And we did, I realized that, so we'll grab him.
Right, they're in the end, I know, I didn't want to, keep it on site.
Yeah, no, I, I saw them sitting there and I thought, oh.
That's what I just realized, like, what's this on the basis?
Okay. Okay, Old Oliver Farms. Old Oliver Farm LLC, conditional use, conditional use application.
Being last isn't that bad.
No, it's not.
Proposal to institute an animal husbandry use and raise domesticated farm animals on an eighty acre farm site located on the former Oliver Farm located at four seventy-five Mountain Road. Tax map sixteen, lot twelve in the R two zone. Mark Canet, DBA, Old Oliver Farm LLC is the owner applicant and Alan Shepard is the designated agent. Now, I know you're not Alan Shepard.
No.
Don't question.
And you're probably just as happy that you aren't. Okay.
Will we approach the bench? Yeah.
I don't know that you want.
Oh, I would.
Yeah, there's that issue as well.
You want to ask Marty to.
What?
Were you able to get any, you were gonna look and see if there was any information to indicate that the, the property had been used for animal husbandry going back?
Yes, it has, but it's not been documented. Uh, uh, it has been, but dox chickens, beef, that, that, uh, cattle was just, I gotta find out all that. Doesn't look like a, this would. Uh, I did, was requested by Ted to make a delineation of the pasture, which we did.
Yep.
And the board did not deem the application complete because you didn't have a stamp.
Stamp is on.
Stamp is on the door.
Okay.
It's in the corner.
Yep, okay.
Down there. So the only area you want is right here, even though you have all that man. Well, that, that, uh, approach the bench.
Yeah.
That's gonna be the pasture, this will be hay, hay.
Okay.
And, uh, if I may say right now, it's nothing to do with the town of Arundel's business, but we're in the sixth inning of having this all preserve of main farm land trust.
Good.
On my demise, all this will be conveyed, uh, that will perpetually never be developed. Uh, we're in the sixth inning and I have to have this done by year two thousand and sixteen to comply.
With two thousand and sixteen.
Yeah, exactly.
So we're getting it done this year?
So I got three farms that will be all combined, different identities, but will never be developed. So in the, in the zoning that we are, uh, it's residential, but I'm never letting it out, it will never develop. And it will be an abatement, which that, uh.
You'll, you'll have the, the farming rights to.
It's, it has to be farmed, it has to be farmed.
Stay in.
So there will always be open space for the town of Arundel.
Now, was that, was that hardscrabble?
Hardscrabble, Highlander and Old Oliver Farm. Right now, what we're talking about tonight is Old Oliver Farm, just trying to migrate some of the cattle up here, the grazed, eat a little bit and come back at night. I mean, as far as them staying in the barn, I can't see for right now, we're digging, but give us just a little, come in, eat and come back. This will be done, this is all hay fields, which is grandfathered, but, uh, this is where we wanna pasture, anything we can at that point. And as far as the barn, as you stated, uh, grandfatheredness would be chickens, ducks, pigs, cattle, we're not quite sure if you have the jurisdiction on that, just checking.
Well, one of, one of the reasons I asked about cattle is, is related to the fact that, that there's a five unit limit.
Correct.
Well, that applies to all domesticated, not, not dogs and cats.
Right.
That applies to.
It, it does, but if, if there's adequate proof that that had existed prior to coming along.
He's gotta prove that to the CEO.
Yes, yeah, and that's, that was my whole concern, if he can show that to the CEO. Otherwise, because we're stuck looking at the ordinance and saying, you've got five units. And that may or may not prove to be probable, I, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure at some point, just, you know, we're trying to be a farm progressive, I don't have to turn it into house laws. And that's why we're working with the main farm land trust with Adam Bishop and to just to try to get this all encompassed, that, uh, it won't be developed. Uh, you know, we can progress and try and be, I got two chickens over that wait, I think you mentioned a couple of weeks ago, chickens really more than one farm. I mean, you could be a pound over if there's chickens in here, the cattle stay overnight, you birth, but they're gonna be, right, migrating from this point to the main farm grazing, come back at night. This is where they have all their water, their cabbage and all the grains are fed, go up there, graze and come back. So I don't know at ten minutes or two in the morning, if there's one hundred pounds over or one hun, I don't know.
I'm, I'm simply, you know, the ordinance doesn't give us the latitude to say, this is the way it is, so, you know. And, and I'm gonna take, I'm gonna have to take your word for it that you're only gonna have five, five units out there at any point in time, because, you know, like I said the last, don't ask me how much that cow weighs. I have no idea. If you wanna ask me about a, a sixteen ounce hamburger, I could probably tell you that.
Sixteen ounce?
It's a big hamburger.
That's right.
How much is a quarter pound though?
Quarter pound, quarter pounders don't weigh a quarter pound.
Well, that could be, could be dispense of the food ton.
Somebody's, somebody's hungry. Okay, no, I, and like I said.
Getting grumpy.
I, I don't.
I think you, you mentioned before, like right now the hardscrabble, there's, there's no issue with that with as many as you, as, as you have.
That's grandfathered. There was a discrepancy, but after we went back in the Yarcocks and pulled all the, everything activity, we're grandfathered.
Good.
Uh, but this wasn't, I wish we would've done it then, but we didn't, so, uh, I'm working on the credibility. I, I don't think, to be honest with you, cattle, horses, horses I think was, but I, I don't think cattle would have been there for six years, as you stated.
Yeah, I honestly don't know, because it's, you know, I've been living in town for ten years and I couldn't tell you how long, if I'd seen cows, horses or anything else out there, I wouldn't know.
Yeah, there, there were cattle.
Yeah.
Or there's a horse, and all people's concurrent.
Yeah. It's gotta be consistent, yeah, and very honestly, Marty, I, I drove that truck every single day.
Yeah.
To come to work for the last six years and I didn't see any cattle.
You might've been downfounded, you can't see.
No, six years, I've done it twenty years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a long distance from the road.
That's just something that you and the CEO have to work on from that side here.
However, for the time being, you know, five animal units, if you can give us some level of comfort that you'll do your best to maintain.
Yeah.
Five animal units, I don't think it's gonna be a problem.
No, it's not gonna be a problem for me.
Given the size of the, I know it's not withstand and into the ordinance, but I don't, I don't foresee any real problems.
Either, either.
Wish we could make it similar.
Yeah, what, other than the stamped plan, is there anything else we need to deem the application complete that you know of?
No. So Marty's giving you another two hundred fifty bucks.
For what?
Because your application was only two hundred fifty, this is, this is a preliminary level.
Write him a check.
Okay.
I was thinking you need that.
You can give him the equivalent.
Tomorrow, okay?
Yeah.
Martin, hear me?
Sure, one, one is. You're about to get two hundred chickens in a farm, what are we?
I don't think it'll take far, maybe a twenty day.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, so we just, we need a motion to deem the application complete and then we'll have to set, set up a sidewalk.
Okay, I have a motion that. Okay, I make a motion that the applicant, the application is complete?
Is, is.
Is I?
Motion's been made and seconded to deem the application complete. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah.
Motion is unanimous?
We're gonna sit up a public hearing today.
Uh.
What's a public hearing for? To just progress this, so we, our farm?
Yeah, I just, to, to move it forward, it gives the, your neighbors and, and anybody else the opportunity to come in and say, I think it's a great idea, I think it's a lousy idea.
And that's because of the conditional use, right?
That's correct.
It's a conditional, it's permanent, so it's for the market.
You can think of it as a good neighbor policy, so if the neighbors have an issue. We're gonna cry against it, we have to take that nice association.
Yeah, and it only, it doesn't include four legged.
No.
No.
You can't bring Yogi? Yes, you can.
Sure.
So is there a chance of this getting for the June, June meeting to get this compliant?
I don't.
We even have to go there.
Are you serious?
Well, he's.
No, no, no.
Hang on, hang on, two different, two different.
He was talking about the five animals, he wants to know about more than five. That's what, and that'll be discussed a little later.
Alright. Should the chair?
Yes.
Uh, we have a motion, I mean, we need a motion on the public hearing.
Stop.
I'd be saying, have.
Marty's saying a public hearing on the tenth?
You got one already, the, the tenth.
We do have one?
We're checking that.
We're checking that.
We don't have one?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do, we, okay, so motion's been made and seconded to have a public hearing on March tenth? Any discussion?
Is that over here?
Right here.
All those in favor? Motion issued unanimously.
I will tell you this, guys, just to, just to be sure, I, I, I'm very, very hopeful, it probably can, but Donna's gotta get this in the paper one day. Goes to make that date. I'm giving her no time.
I thought we had a public hearing this three days.
Three days?
No.
No. Oh, sidewalk is three days. No, no, okay, sorry, you're right.
It's a ten-day notice, so, well, that's what she does tomorrow. She says she can't do it, then we have to push it off.
Yeah.
All day, I'm not sure she does. You know, Donald Lindner?
Not your Donna, Donald Lindner.
I know. Is, uh, now which paper is that, Ted?
Joe's trip, it's the only one I, uh, daily circulation, which were required by law.
And it gets quicker than doing it.
Which I don't care, because, you know, in, in Waterboro Hollis, Boston area, they have a weekly, shoppers weekly, and that's where they do the public hearings.
Well, we've got time down here too.
That's your circulation. We've got circulation throughout the whole town.
Okay, so, we're good to go from that point of view?
Okay, so you're good to go until, for, for the public hearing.
And meeting starts at seven o'clock, it'll be here.
Oh boy. A little busy feeding them, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, you wanna be this is public.
Feed them early.
That's what I tried to tell you.
They'll eat any time you feed them.
All right, okay, okay. All right, thank you.
You guys have a good night.
Okay, next item up is the proposed fire protection ordinance, and, no, the next item up is, and it's my fault, I forgot to do it, we didn't cut the meeting. The minutes of the eleventh meeting, we have not approved those. So, before we do the fire ordinance, let's look at these meetings, uh, this, these minutes, and decide what you're gonna do.
We got a little time to do it, so.
Okay, I had, I was ready to make the motion before, so I'll make it now. Motion to approve as written?
Still a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve as written. Any discussion? Any changes that people wanna make to the? Hearing done. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Gonna compliment you on the lengthy minutes, but most of it was what you'd already written.
That's right, smart man. Okay.
When I saw seven pages, I thought, like, what is that?
I, I felt we wanted this, but we're here.
Let's look at the, at the, uh, proposed fire protection ordinance. Did you, by any chance, compile that together?
I could not find, I couldn't find the, um, your, your document.
Okay.
I have had a crash, but I've had a whole section of my conditional use, and my ordinance sections disappeared from my computer.
We don't wanna hear excuses.
I know, but.
Well, on top of that, yes, I sent it to everybody, but Tan has another, 'cause I have done two of them.
Actually, I'm not sure you did do it yourself, 'cause you came in today and put the splitter on, and because I have, now I've got a laptop. I do all the, I have to do all the loading of all the, the goods and the rest of stuff.
Who do, who does the town have for a contribution board?
Computer, creative computer design on a Kenner motherboard.
They get paid?
Oh, they get paid, yeah.
Well, if they, if they don't come, they don't get paid.
Well, it's a contract. On contract crisis, so.
All right, anyway, on your fire, on your fire.
Well, stuff to work with. Fire protection.
Yeah. I'd like to turn out a couple things, since you can't find that. Let's make sure we have it written down, okay, in writing, instead of just maybes. About the idea of having fire hydrants per se is, we were told, one thousand feet apart. Uh, along Route One, also inward. Off Route One, since we're going deeper than one thousand feet for our commercial zones.
Well, yeah, but that has to be written as part of the ordinance, which.
Right, which is what Marty said.
Next time around, yeah.
Well.
Right, when we do that.
We're discussing this now.
Right.
So, the, uh, I mean, we were talking about fire sprinklers also at the same time.
Right, but you're talking about a thousand feet as it's developed though, right? You don't wanna a hydrant every thousand feet if there's nothing there.
As needed, okay?
As it's developed, right.
And somebody puts in a road every thousand feet, I mean, you know, the big question is wherever there's water supply, every thousand feet, uh, you should have, have it.
That way, it's also, 'cause when I built in oh-two, that was one of the requirements. I don't know where it's written or what, but turn it on.
I found it. It's, yeah, it's a thousand feet.
Yeah, and we should say that as a thousand feet, doesn't matter what direction.
It's in subdivision, it's not in zone.
Okay, so then, so, if that's the case. If that's the case, that could be brought forward, so, in, uh, at this time, because it's already there. Under organization.
It's in, it's in the subdivision ordinance.
That's what, commercial, commercial, commercial is subdivision, so it would be along Route One.
Only if it's a commercial subdivision, it's just, it's what happens. It's not required, and that's why it needs to be in the zoning ordinance, uh, subdivision. I guess I have some organizational questions to ask the board. Which issue, we talked about a fire protection ordinance, are we doing an ordinance, we're doing sections to the zoning ordinance, we're doing sections to the, uh, subdivision, are we doing all three? Because, that's my fundamental question, are we doing this, are we proposing this? You proposed standalone ordinance to selectmen, are we still, are we still pursuing that, only making it more inclusive, including, uh, basically, uh, required sprinkling? Are we doing that as a standalone ordinance, or is that part of the zoning ordinance? Which one are we gonna propose?
Why should we do it as a separate?
That's what, the impact fees would have to be, we can't do impact fees. No, we can't do impact fees as part of the zone, we'll do an impact, the selectmen have to do the impact.
Right, but we can still write it into the zoning, and then the selectmen can set fees, right?
Exactly.
Well, the zoning reference this standalone.
Well, that's a question, chicken or egg? Because I, you know, I, I feel like I'm, I'm gonna start writing this stuff, because we, we need to, we need to get, we've got ideas, but we need to put it together now. But I need to know which one we're going for first. Are we going for fire protection first, or are we doing the fire, are we doing the ordinance? Well, ordinance, we're gonna propose the slot.
Well, no, my, my thought on the whole, whole thing was, you know, the only reason I did the, the impact fees was because it had, in order to give it to the selectmen for impact fees, we had to do it as a standalone ordinance. If we're not gonna do the impact fees, then we should put it into the ordinance and make it part of the ordinance, so that it, and, and we can have the same ordinance. We can say, you know, residences have to be sprinkled, or businesses have to be sprinkled, and it would apply. And then just stick it, here's the DB one, the DB two, the R four, wherever it happens to be, and new, new construction has to be sprinkled. And, and you make it part of the ordinance, the same way Marty wants to say, every thousand feet, if we're developing Route One, as you go down it, you get to the thousand foot mark, guess what, you're gonna put a hydrant there.
Well, he found it, it was there.
It's in the subdivision, not the general, so we have to move it out into the general.
Well, the fact is, when it was HC one, and a lot simpler, we didn't have all these different zonings and everything else, that's where it was pulled from.
No, it's not, see, it's not, it's never been in the zoning, it's in the subdivision ordinance, and it only applies when we have a subdivision, a legal subdivision. Last subdivision we did was Phil's. That's a, we have done basically one subdivision the last five years, one new subdivision.
We're looking at the second.
What you call, uh, seasonal cottages.
That was a subdivision slash conditional use, but I mean, in terms of a.
Traditional subdivision.
Traditional subdivision, I mean, we did that in two thousand and ten, it's two thousand and sixteen, so the last five years, six years, we, that's our, Phil's is our first one we've done.
No, we did the one over on, off Old Post Road.
Yeah, Terrell.
Right, so, but that's it, that's all we've done, you're right.
And we, and we made a credit system.
Yes. And, and, and we need to, uh, but I, my thoughts on it were that it should be part of the ordinance, and it should, should apply across town to everything.
So, we should probably first start with the zoning ordinance, so we should fill in that section of the performance standards, you know, fire protection, section seven.
I, I, I would say, let's, instead of having a holdup, everything else, get it started in some way, so that when we have our next town meeting in June, we have something there.
You, you've got the document that I gave, we can, I gave it to everybody two weeks ago. I gave it to everybody.
That was with the sprinkling and all of that.
Yes, yeah, that's the one. And we can, we can modify that to fit the use that we have.
I think that's what.
It wasn't an animal.
It was?
No, it was not, I handed it out.
Hand it out at the previous meeting. Was it in, uh?
Okay, that bag's in the pot, okay.
So, we, we can go.
We need to bring back our miners, guys, I think is what we're gonna have to do, we'll start dealing with the zoning ordinance, is bring back your miners pointers, get everything else out.
Yeah, throw that out.
Throw that out, file away, and.
I have a question about putting it into the, into the ordinance, we're forwarding this to the selectmen, but then we'll have this other one there.
Yeah. That's, that's what we wanna do, it's a blade, we're gonna put it into the server.
It'll fit in, was it seven? Oh, I don't see where it is. There, there was a spot in there, I remember looking at it.
And I just had a question to you at last meeting on it.
Right.
So.
'Cause there's a spot that we can have a section in there for conditional uses. One of these reserved sections could be.
Yeah, actually, the text is actually called out.
Right, so, uh, the special meeting, we'll have a slot open for it, and a town meeting, we can put some.
That's right, 'cause that won't get in until June, but this'll, this'll happen hopefully within the next three weeks.
How many happen at the end of March, because Sims is making?
Uh, might happen, it might happen in March, yeah.
So, it's gonna be a special town meeting?
Just for that.
To get this off the plate, so, the object is to clear the decks, get this off, out of the way, so we can start putting in pieces into this now. Because remember, the last time we did it, you tried to do this simultaneously with the, with the. Public handle, we developed it very fast.
Is the selectmen aware that we're, we're gonna compete at that expense?
Yeah, we, we've told, I, I talked with the selectmen and said we wanted to do this, and they went, okay.
And they've already said, they've already, they're ready for it.
They're waiting on us.
They're waiting on us. We have the next meeting, that this is on the agenda, set a public hearing, or set, set the, the special topic.
Five point seven.
There you go, Marty.
Five point seven.
Five point seven, front page.
Five point seven.
Protection, excellent.
And we can, we get that all developed, we can drop it in, and this is, that was what I was kinda hoping, I mean, we can look through this, we can say, what do we like, what do we wanna change? In terms of the numbers, I mean, we can change the numbers without any trouble at all, but we can look at the content of the ordinance and say, what do we do with it? Do you like it, do you wanna change it? I, I mean, I like your idea of, of the hydrants on a thousand feet, we can stick that right in here.
Well, we would put it in there, because then it's required in every.
That's right.
Every situation, there's no escaping, and the other thing is, guys, remember, when we put it in the zoning ordinance, it applies to family divisions too.
Yep.
Family divisions don't escape this anymore.
Well, the only thing is, if you don't have a water main.
Yeah, if you don't have a water main, but I also understand, if you're a family division, you, you're putting five houses out there. And I don't mean to pick on, on, on somebody, where we just have a large private way, that's a family, that's supporting a, a, a family subdivision. Technically, under any subdivision standard, I mean, your standards, there should be a sister in that system.
Well, they also have a pond in.
Yeah, but they don't have fittings on that. This would, this would no longer exempt family divisions from not providing fire protection. And then they seem like a burden, and we'll probably get a lot of flack for it. Simple fact is, as we all know, family divisions disappear over time, they become a subdivision, so there's different people living there, and they're without fire protection.
But at the same time, if it's a family division, don't you wanna protect your family?
I would think so, I would, I would wanna do that.
It's a basic safety.
And the standard that the, that this uses is the NFBA.
Yeah, thirteen, thirteen R.
Yeah.
So, I think that's, that's good, that we could plug that in there.
The other thing is, also, with plugging, okay, we have also, what do you, we have eleven point three point five. Eleven two five? Eleven point three point five.
Animal husbandry, yeah.
I think, as we talked in a long way, for farm, we put a definition in for farm. If there isn't, because there is not a definition for farm.
We can, we can put it on the agenda to cover it, yes.
Well, well, that's what I'm saying is, so, in the case, also at the time, of animal husbandry, as a case of farm, then we can also, like, for the case of, which we have a public meeting for, for Oliver Farm, that he, he is a farm. Even though what zone it is or anything else, he can have more than five.
Well, and it applies to Pam Drew as well, Pamela, and a few others.
Correct.
But this is for the animal, again, I'm talking about something that would be.
We, we can go down.
To put a farm in, in these districts.
We can go down that road, and we can talk about that, uh, at some other point, in terms of whether or not, uh, we wanna put something like that into the ordinance. I mean, I agree with you, we need a definition of what it is, but in terms of where they go and all of the other, those are all things that we can discuss later. Right now, we're talking about the fire ordinance, and what are we gonna do with the fire ordinance? So, let's, let's kinda stay on task in terms of what we're, we're working on right now. What we, what everybody should do is, look at the ordinance, if you like what's in there, or, or do we wanna wait for Tad to get back to us and review it? I think it would work well if we all looked at it and said, what would we like to see in a fire protection ordinance for the town? Because then we can take all of our ideas together, if Tad's gonna put it together, or if one of us is gonna put it together. 'Cause this came about that when, uh, when Bob was chair, and he, he suggested that we look at different things and we put it together, and that's how this came off. We write the ordinance, we are the select, uh, the group of people that have added and imposed upon us.
Well, you're essentially the.
The volunteers, we volunteered for this.
Well, the other thing is, as I mentioned, on way, besides having it along Route One, which is, but also, where I've pushed it extensively, since our business zone has expanded deeper, it needs.
But that's what I'm saying, right, we could, when you read through the ordinance and say, what would I like to see in here in addition, and bring that back to the table, so we can all sit and say, this is what I'd like to see it have. This is how I would like to, to see this ordinance developed, and if everybody else agrees, we can add it in, and we'll build it up from that point of view.
So, you know, 'cause what Marty's saying is, I'd like to see extension of water lines into the, into the, deep into the DB two district, and into the AR district, because it's face, and most of the AR district, the land available is still in the rear.
Yeah.
And a lot of that, especially along that side where Phil is, we've got several large properties in there, it's, it's, they're interior properties.
Yeah.
Um, and the issue is they're, you know, X number of feet, you gotta extend up a water line, which is a big, which is a big cost.
If, if they're within X number of feet, yes, but this, this ordinance also allows for fire ponds and, and, and other, uh, resources that people can use. So, it's, you know, we're not, we're not restricting it to saying you have to have a hydrant, we can, but we are saying you have to have a water supply, and we give them three or four different options in terms of what they use.
I think what Marty was also saying is that where you have water.
If you've got, if you've got water, yes, we wanna hydrant.
You should use the, you should stand there.
That's what I'm saying, because that's where I, on Route One, I'm using that as my source.
Yep.
Okay, because that is, is where I am adamant about, because of multiple of people and everything else. That's one of the reasons why, and they basically have agreed, but the other thing, when we had our meeting with the chief, I threw something else out, which the chief even agreed a hundred percent. They, if we have like a development going on, let's say, across the street from where, uh, Bentley's is, that forty acre parcel is, to have a fire hydrant on the other side of the street, instead of trying to play hoses.
Oh, yeah, you know, we're never gonna be able to shut down Route One.
No, I'm just, I, I'm using that as, and the other sad thing is, which we never had, and I don't, don't think we'll ever get, is where Enterprise Drive is. Okay, we forced somebody to put a fire hydrant, and it went to the cross the street, when they were developing the two buildings on Route One. But when you turn it on and develop Enterprise Drive. But when you turn it on and develop Enterprise Drive with all the different businesses up through there, that is more than a thousand feet. I'm just using that.
And, and I think that's a good example, and that's one of the things that we have to address. Do we, if you are more than a thousand feet from Route one, do we wanna make you hook into the main and bring hydrant up that way?
They did it when in turn you had to run the pool.
Well, yeah, I, I understand they did, but when we look at the ordinance, do we want that in the ordinance? It's one of those things that we have to look at. Do we wanna tell some guy, yeah, you're moving into this neighborhood, guess what? You're more than a thousand feet from, from, uh, Route one, so you've gotta put a hydrant up in here. You've gotta run, that's an expensive proposition to run the lineup. I'm not saying that we don't say it to people. I'm not saying we don't put it in the ordinance. It's something that we need to look at and decide, do we want that in the ordinance? Is that one of the items that we should be looking at?
I'm sure we'll get feedback from it, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah. They will definitely get feedback on it, but these are all the things that, that you need to put down and say, this is what I would like to see. I would like to see all new construction sprinkled, all of it. I don't care if it's commercial or residential. I think it should all be sprinkled.
I don't.
And you may not agree with me, but that's what I'm saying. We bring these ideas and we sit down and we decide amongst ourselves, what do we actually want? And that's a session that we would have to go through and, and set time aside just to work on that, that idea. But I think it's something that if we're gonna do a fire ordinance, we need to do it. We need to take that time.
I think also be part of our fire ordinance, okay, I don't think we have to have everything in it at one shot. I'm saying is.
You're, you're always, it's always gonna evolve and change, the same way the, the subdivision does, the same way DB one or DB two will. There'll always be circumstances where we look at it and say, hey, guess what? Maybe that wasn't a good idea, like the, the farm retail. You know, we're looking at that going, okay, it says one owner, but if it's a partnership, then the partnership owns it, but there's more than two people involved in the partnership. So we're always gonna be identifying areas where we can tweak things a little bit.
I, what I'm saying is, okay, since we've had, this'll be our second, I think subdivision, okay, that has put in sprinkler system or willing to put sprinkler system in, meaning them.
Yep.
Okay, the other one is down on the, the Old Limerick Road. Okay? Where they turn out, put in the sprinkler system for each home.
Yep.
So I mean, this is our second one of saying the, okay, that this is part of it, but like I says, before our next meeting in June presenting, I want at least something in for Route one.
If we're gonna.
I mean, and then we can build on.
Marty, if we're gonna put, if we're gonna put a fire ordinance in, we need the fire ordinance to cover the entire town. We don't wanna say, we're gonna, if you're on Route one, you have to do this, but if you're on, i- if you're in the ARD district, it doesn't apply. They're both business districts.
What, who's that where water is? Water isn't on the ARD.
But that, but the ordinance doesn't address the fact that you have water. The ordinance addresses the fact that you have to have some kind of water source, be it, be it a water main or a fire pond or a sister. You have to, to provide some kind of source. I think it, I think it's great if we say on Route one, you have to put in a hydrant, but we need to look at, look at it, and that's why we have to develop all of this. So bring your ideas. We'll get them all together and we'll work it all up. We're not gonna get it resolved tonight, that's for sure.
I'll try to get, I'll try to get a, a format for all.
Okay.
Although frankly speaking, we've got a very packed house.
We, we do, and, and we may not.
And we've got Bellis coming in on the tent with their application.
We may not be able to get, to look at it, but if we can get a framework of something, we can just start filling it in.
Cause, you know, if we wanna take anything to, you know, being, you gotta do it now.
Yeah.
Cause we have very little time.
We gotta get it, end of April, I believe, is, is the drop dead date on it?
Cause you gotta, cause we need, I need two weeks to do the.
Right. So we're gonna have.
We've done it in May.
We have done it in May. It was a push.
We have.
And the thing is, understand, we might wanna have it as early as possible, or have a public hearing as early as possible because, you know, we're gonna have, we're gonna raise a stake among some people. We wanna find out how bad it's gonna be. Because there might be things we might have to just jettison for the moment.
That's right. There might be. Look what happened a couple of years ago when we had to shoot the whole thing and say, okay.
It's where the whole landscape section.
We gotta go back and work on stuff, okay? The next item, a proposal to introduce equestrian centers and riding stables as conditional uses in the R four district.
Question just to R four.
Well, that, that's what it says.
I know, I, I know you're reading it.
Question.
Yeah, Marty.
When did this come a priority from what we've said before? I've asked you, I mean, how is it convenient that this is coming ahead of something else that we've talked about?
Well, cause we did talk about this before.
Just recent?
Yeah, well, actually, no, I've been talking about this for a while, cause I got a problem with it. Cause I have, I have five riding stables in the town, a rental, that are all non-conforming to the. And I have more coming. I got a big one out on Thompson Road and another one that wants to come in, and another one that wants to come in on Lombard Road.
So how you gonna do with your fire protection?
Well, right now, I can't, I can't let these guys do any.
I'm just saying.
Can't come in. The fire protection stuff, we'll get done too. But this one seemed easy. This is easier than fire protection right now.
The horses need a pond too, to go swimming in.
Marty, it's not like this is being, this is, this is basically eclipsing the other one. This is just in addition. I thought this one could get banged up with it. Which you could. It was easy to bang it out. Cause there's a lot of stuff out there. The three, by the way, the three categories are basically, that was a recommendation from a number of planning agencies in Maryland and Arizona and I think all in that valley, where they have large horse farms and so forth. They suggested a tiered system for, for horses.
Question on that, is in a horse, animal husbandry? Yeah. It falls under the same category.
Well, then, as I said, I've got four, four, uh, three, excuse me, I've got three horse farms right now that are illegal. Cause they, they, they're in excess of five animals.
Yes, but they were here before zoning.
Uh, some of them weren't. And all of them were supposed to get a conditional use permit, because it's always animal husbandry in this ordinance, which has been around since, frankly speaking, the early nineties. They didn't get permits.
Well, did they make up, didn't up, didn't have to have a name for everything? You got two on River Road right off that. I mean, uh, and you got the other one who wants to turn the horse into a, a, a pet center.
So what we're doing, once again, we've got, it was something that's not allowed by our ordinance and hasn't been allowed by our ordinance for a while. We're trying to make them legal again, just like contracting yards. And we had contractor yards all over the place and they weren't allowed. They just grew organically over time. They were, they were home businesses that outglued themselves. Some of these stables were having a, you know, a, a pet, a couple of pet horses in the back and it grew from there. These things are organic. That's how these things happen. Before you know it, you got a riding stable, they're giving classes and having events, having dressage events. And that's, you know, that's a problem because they're not even allowed to do that. Then we have one that put in a huge facility out on Thompson Road.
Yeah.
Yeah, an advanced facility, something frankly speaking, you'd have a pretty tax dollar for and a beautiful facility. They can't commercially board horses there. This is not permitted. Boarding is not permitted in animal husbandry.
Okay.
Well, hard is it?
Boarding, boarding training and having events. Dressage is not animal husbandry.
It can't belong to somebody else and stay on your property. They have to be your horses.
And more importantly, they have events. They have riding, they have events, they have shows, they have dressage, they have quarter horse races, you know.
You don't think?
Yes.
As all part of dressage or, or speed show, obviously, this is illegal.
I need, I need to tell you that when I look at this on the schedule of uses by district on the very first page.
Yep.
You have equestrian stable in R one.
Yep.
And R two on hand, okay? You allow, you, you're, you're wanting to allow as a conditional use, commercial stables in R two, but not equestrian centers, and I don't think they belong in R two.
What, a stable?
Uh, the commercial stable, yes.
That's a free.
And that's, that's, that's my comment on it. We're, we're saying that you can have an equestrian center. There's very little difference in the descriptions between equestrian stable, commercial stables or equestrian centers.
Just the number of horses.
Just the number of horses. Everything else is identical, uh, so I don't think that the R two would be appropriate.
All right.
Unless you wanna also say that you can't have outdoor lighting. I mean, that would be something, you could say the R two outdoor lighting is inappropriate.
And, and, but I do think that equestrian centers should be allowed in the DB two.
Well, I'm not sure it's the highest and best use, but.
It, it may not be, but if it's not, if, if all it is right now is just sitting there empty, then, then, you know, yeah, put it out there. And I would not have a problem personally. I, I'm not sure how other people feel about it.
Let's put it this way, it would bring more of a tax value turn out than a campground. Yeah, the campground is only seasonal.
But an equestrian center is commercial.
It is, yeah, it's very commercial.
It's commercially is.
And, and we're saying that the commercial stable could be there, but the equestrian center could not. So I was, no, let them both be there, in my opinion.
I was trying to push that, I was trying to encourage a bigger facility. For exactly what you guys were talking about.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's all, you know, the, the only differences between these things are you've got ten horses with a stable.
Yep.
And that might be not enough. I don't know. Ten horses isn't that much.
Not.
It's, it's a good amount, but it's, it's.
It's over five animal units.
It's, yes.
It's way more than one animal unit.
And I was very much aware of that.
And, and I'm looking at that going, in the, in the R one or the R two district, ten horses is a lot.
But look at, look at, look at the horse per acre.
Half acre, half horse, yes.
Uh, if you're, if you're zoning, it's ten horses per acre.
And that might be.
I thought that'd be a little much.
Well, that, that might be something that we looked at just to address the issue of, of, uh, animal units. We might very well just decide, you know, hey, maybe we should just say it's one unit per half acre. As opposed to saying, there's five per lot. I don't, I don't know.
That was sort of my thought in the, the R two portion of things, where we could have some sizable enough pieces of property in the R two to, to substantiate more than ten horses. But yet we don't want that on every three acre lot.
Right, right.
So that's why they had a minimum lot size and then you can add more horses, the larger the block we've got.
For, for, in the R two though, where it is, commercial is commercial, whether it be the traffic and.
Outdoor riding ring, indoor riding ring. As opposed to the R two, which is residential.
Which is residential.
So you, you hold a commercial out of there and go to R three then? R three is essentially R two.
We, we don't have no R three at this point, do we?
Yeah, we still.
Still the conflict would be to get rid of it, but.
Yes, but again, in your R two.
Right, so, so I guess when I would, when I would be inclined, instead of calling it maybe commercial, give a, give a, uh, uh, I guess a provision to allow the stable to have more than ten horses, if.
You have the acreage.
If you have the acreage. You, you have the same.
Yeah.
Same usage limitations in the stable, but you could have
Yeah.
Up to thirty.
I'd be like with Tad.
Up to thirty horses.
Once you have a fence and other stuff, then, then it's more impact on the neighborhood.
Yep.
But if you have the acreage.
But even, even with the acreage.
You have the acreage. I mean, you know, sometimes on, depending on the road, you know, I'd be.
Thompson Road's not a great place to be having a large name of that.
Huh?
Thompson Road is not a great place to be having a large name on it.
Why?
Pulling a trailer out of there.
Thompson Road?
Yeah.
It's a tough, it's a tough.
It's a tough road.
Take a trip.
It's an old country road.
It's an old country road that somebody laid a piece of pavement on top of, cause it's in, it's in bad shape.
But the thing is that it is considered to be an arterial road in this town.
Right, yeah, cause it goes all the way through and connects.
Yeah, right.
But that, but, you know.
The, my other question about this, and I know it's not probably anything you thought of. What would, um, prevent a, I guess, an aggressive type of person from turning an equestrian center into a horse racing, uh, venture?
Nothing. Nothing.
Cause there's no size on the arena. There's no limitation on the arena.
But if, if.
We could just say horse racing is not allowed.
Because what I don't want, let me draw what you said was wrong. I don't want somebody to construe what most people would see as an equestrian center into a racino type of situation.
Well, if you're getting gambling, that's a whole different.
You got gambling down the street. You got a social.
State law, wherever there's a, a racetrack.
But.
You, you can have a racino.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, yeah.
You can have slot machines.
Slot machines, yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, if you wanna put a caveat in there, non-racetrack, I mean, if Sneaple Chase, I believe, it's still, you know, level in the state of Maine, I think.
I have no idea.
I think it's still, it was at one point.
No, but even poor Foxes had to run hard.
Now, why, why couldn't we do?
But that's a race.
Why couldn't we do the same thing, you know, since we're putting this ahead of the, the other public requests we had? Why couldn't we do the same thing for something like a farm? You know, if we're talking about having, you know, ten horses, well, what's the difference if you have ten cows?
I, I won't argue the point. That's why I was saying when, when it comes to, to animal units, why not, I, I think the idea of one per half acre, if you've got the land to support them, is not necessarily a bad thing. I'm just looking at, a- and I know everybody probably disagrees, but I look at R one and R two and go, those are residential zones. We don't need commercial property.
But you already have.
Marty, I understand that we already have it, but I don't wanna encourage more. I don't want to co, to turn our residential zones into commercial districts. And if we do not restrict out commercial properties, that's exactly what will happen.
Well, let me ask you this then, okay, down on River Road.
Yep.
Okay, which is R two.
Yep.
Okay. You would rather have residences in there?
Yes.
Then.
It's an R two zone.
That has large acreage. Large acreage.
It's the R two zone. That's the reason that I say it's resident. What if you're a homeowner who wants to have a hundred acres of land? It's not a commercial zone. I don't believe businesses belong in residential zones unless they are incidental to the residents. The same way in which we made DB one, you can have a residence, but it is ancillary to the business. The business is the primary purpose there. And in our one or in our two zone, I believe the primary purpose should be residential, not commercial. I don't care how big your lot is.
Well, there's, there's a basic difference between central planning and doing, you know, following your community. We either follow what's already there, which is what's happening with the equestrian center. They're there. So we're gonna write an ordinance to accommodate them, or we say by central planning, this is residential and you will not do any of these other things there.
We have already, we do have.
And they're gonna happen anyway.
We have already defined residential neighborhoods.
I know we have, but that, I'm just pointing out the difference, and which is one of the reasons I don't like this whole ordinance, because we're trying to force people into certain modes and pathways, but they're gonna do their own thing anyway, and then we have to accommodate the changes.
We don't have to accommodate the changes first off. And we're not trying, we're not, the fact that we always do doesn't mean that we have to. We ch, we choose to accommodate the changes. A zoning ordinance is nothing more than a compact between neighbors that say, I agree to do this in a certain area and not in some other area. I agree to have my commercial units in the DB one or in the DB two, not next door to some guy in an R one district. It's nothing more than a, a compact amongst neighbors that helps us to live civilly. If we decide that it is a free for all and you can put whatever you want anyplace in town, then we should just lock the doors on every residence in town and tell everybody to go away because it's gonna turn into nothing but a commercial area, and there won't be any place for residences to live.
Well, then you won't have to worry about busting the school.
Yeah, I disagree with that. I, I think things would go along just fine without. I, I think things would go along just fine without the ordinance at all, but getting back to.
But that has never happened in recorded history.
Getting back, yes, it did.
Oh, no, it didn't.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it did, when you had all the farms in town.
Yeah, that was wonderful. The thing is, when you have a monoculture, you don't need someone. It's when you have land uses that are not compatible, that can affect each other's value. It's not only, it's not only whether residents, it's property values. Everybody has an investment in their property. And to maintain that value, whether it's a business or whether it's residents, the object is to keep that, the value of that property, to enhance it if possible, and to make sure no, a budding use or other neighbor in the neighborhood has a use that devalues that person's property. And frankly speaking, you would put a residential, large residential, for instance, you wouldn't want to put in a commercial district, in the BI district, you wouldn't want to put a large residential elderly community right next to, uh, to a manufacturing operation. Because frankly speaking, they're gonna complain about the manufacturing operation. Even better, you don't put a large set of condominiums on the waterfront right next to where the lobster boats pull in and unload their gear or load up their gear at four in the morning and pull out their fish.
But they do have condominiums right on the pier.
Exactly, and look at, look at what they tried to kill each other over. In fact, I will tell you this, the lobster boats aren't there anymore.
The elderly community wouldn't even hear the industrial operation.
Supposedly, supposedly they would.
But that's kind of strange.
I was involved in that.
What I'm trying to say is we're reacting by this equestrian thing, we're reacting to what people are doing despite the ordinance. And yet we're saying we shouldn't do that in other cases which are similar.
I would say that they are not acting despite the ordinance, they are acting in spite of the ordinance. They are disregarding it completely and, and ignoring it. That's not my problem. That's somebody else's issue to have to deal with and address. If you're running a business that should not be in the area, I have no authority to do anything about that. All, the only authority that we have is to say, these are the rules and regulations by which we choose to govern the, the land use of the town of Arundel.
Question. Is an equestrian a farm? What?
It depends.
It's a commercial operation.
It can be, so is it a farm?
It depends. If, if you're raising horses for sale, yes, it would be a farm.
It depends, which.
If you're boarding and riding, then it would not be. If you're raising horses for horse meat, yes, it would be. If you're riding and boarding, it won't be.
And even, even if you were raising them, to John's point, even if you're raising horses and you are going to be selling them so that they can run into Kentucky Derby, it's still a horse farm.
It's a farm.
It's a farm.
Yes. Study.
But it depends upon the reason that the horses are there. If the horses are there so that you can ride around on them, that does not make them a farm. If the, if the reason the horses are there is so that you can sell them, you could breed them and sell them and move on to something else, it becomes like a crop there.
It's actually, most equestrian centers are all of the above. And they couldn't, they, they raise horses, they train, a lot of, a lot of training. Um, that's how they make the money, the boarding and training. Um, exercising the animals and, uh, they make a good, good, good penny on the events, dressage.
And a back toe.
So it's a different animal than a normal farm where the object of, the objective is to produce food crop for sale. Whether it be, you know, whether it be, and, and many farms don't do just one thing either.
Yeah.
But they tend to be specialized. I mean, these days, farms do tend to be specialized. But they, you know, they can do, they can raise livestock, usually do, you know, chickens are always ancillary to form, they're ancillary to everything. You know, they could, they could have milk cows, they could have maybe a couple of steer for, for meat, you know, sheep. But then they also have, you know, they'll, they'll have to raise crops. They do a whole bunch of things, but the objective is to create a product that is for sale. You know, um, for mainly an edible product for sale.
Let's put it this way, your equestrian farms, farmers or anything else, your horses are more demanding.
Yes.
And also more, uh, complicated.
Yes.
Than your cow or your average chicken.
So, so I, I, I mean, the whole context of a farm, I wanna bring up the definition of animal husbandry. The raising of animals for commercial gain, including livestock poultry, the breeding of any domesticated animals, including cats and dogs.
Yeah, shouldn't they have cats and dogs? Why shouldn't?
Would.
Cause we have camels.
So what I would, the way I would interpret the equestrian is that it would be a subset of animal husbands.
Only if you're selling them.
Only if you're selling, but what if you're doing, what if you're training?
No, for the raising of animals for commercial gain. Doesn't say you have to sell them.
Well, what if you're bringing in, you're bringing in a gelding, you're not raising it. It's a gelding, it's a three-year-old gelding or a four-year-old gelding and you're training it, then you're not raising it. It's already raised, it's an adult.
You're right.
You're not raising it, you're training it to do, to perform. It's not the same thing.
It is too.
No, I don't, I don't think it is, because, because I.
Cause you're gonna get paid?
I, but I agree with Ted, it might be commercial, but the definition of animal husbandry is raising those animals.
You're, you're still raising it.
Marty.
When your child, when your child is ten, okay? And he hasn't left the roost yet, till he's eighteen, you're still raising him.
But Marty, you cannot compare humans to animals.
Yes, you can.
You're wrong. First off, it's.
But guess what, sometimes the animals are smarter.
Well, yeah, sometimes they are, I can't argue. But, but the, the point being.
And they can get even.
The point being that that, our definition implies that you are raising them up. If you are bringing in fully grown horses, they are, you are not raising them, you are boarding them, and there is a difference.
But you're turning, you're using them.
That's not what animal husbandry says. Animal husbandry says raising, raising for commercial purposes, not boarding for commercial purposes.
But you're raising them too.
You are not.
You're teaching them, you're teaching them if they're gonna turn into sash.
Marty, I'm not going down that line with you because you obviously don't understand what raising an animal means.
So my, my whole thought with this is if, you know, we're looking at different things under the animal husbandry in other, you know, with other requests in town, is could it be sort of dovetailed in with this? Where I don't see the equestrian stable part of the, you know, the, the discussion being too far off of what we would end up talking about with animal husbandry in the R two zone.
It would be a, a, an issue of changing the def- the definition of animal husbandry from raising an animal to what?
Profiting?
Boarding, story, add, add something to indicate.
Raising or sustaining.
And I think. Sustaining would be good. Raising or sustaining for commercial purposes would be a good way of describing it.
I think we're also talking about two different sets of species here, with different, with different characteristics. You know, talking about a milk cow, Holstein, it's a lot, or talking about rabbits, a lot different than talking about horses. Horse is a unique, a unique creature. You can say the same thing about goats or, 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 or Holsteins or whatever you want to include. But a horse is sort of like a, a different animal altogether, it's a different character.
It is, sure.
Well, we can't have cow races.
We'll have cow races.
And you don't ride.
Yeah, you have bull riders.
We don't have, a lot of people wanted to raise.
I don't ride cows.
People of those.
Well, other than.
You're raising a farm, are you? You got a bear?
Kids and have a, have mommy, I, you know, what, I wanna, I want, I wanna.
It's just an emotional thing, but there's no difference with the animal. It's, it's just an emotional thing.
But I thi- I think to Jamie's point.
I think any horse person would disagree with me.
But to Jamie's point, it makes it, he make, he brings up a good point. If we can adjust the definition of animal husbandry in some way to address, uh, the issue of being able to have in the R two district.
More animal.
More animal use. And, and, which is why I, I think the idea of, well, this says one animal or one equine per half acre. Maybe we could look at it and say, uh, one animal unit per half acre or one animal unit per acre. Or come up with some kind of a, a standard from that. I don't know, that, I, I, I really don't know how, but I think it's worth pursuing.
And different, you know, just to go off the equestrian thing. When, when you get into animal husbandry, it does, it could, going by animal unit could create some problems where you, you don't wanna have an unintended chicken farm.
Right, yep.
In a, you know, an R two area.
Well, the advantage of that.
So it is some, some other thing.
The advantage of that, if you say it's one animal unit, you've got one chicken per acre.
I'm, I'm a thousand pound chicken. I couldn't question. I don't want, what I don't want to have the perception of doing, and it's a little bit to Marty's point. So putting, getting something and, and spending a lot of time on something, you know, where, I know Ted, you've been, you're dealing with this on a routine basis. But a little bit of the perception could be from, you know, people that have, have been trying to, to come in front and be very patient in working with our, our ordinance, that we're, we're blowing them off. And we're not giving them the, the due process that they've been asking for over, you know, for equestrian.
That's right.
We like them better.
No, we're taking horses because we got about five, six, seven of them.
Yeah, we also have farms that, that need.
We have one farm.
Well, we also have the Gamas, that's another farm, that's another problem.
She, she right now is very happy the way things are right now.
But.
She doesn't have an issue unless we decide we're gonna enforce it. Mark didn't have an issue until he decided to expand.
And, and that, that becomes the issue. Mark ran into an issue because he wanted to expand. Pam doesn't have an issue simply because it's not being enforced. That shouldn't, that problem should not exist.
We could not enforce Mark, too.
Yeah, but that problem should not exist. We should not be looking at it going, we're gonna have a, we know this is not gonna be enforced. Well, if it's not gonna be enforced, we shouldn't be wasting our time creating it. But that's, that's a whole other issue.
So I, I agree with you, Jamie, I, I think we should look at something more general. I, I've been thinking about, you know, changing that animal unit thing to apply to larger pieces of land so that you could expand the number of animals. And if we are clever about it, if we include horses in that and also boarding or sustaining horses, we would need all of this stuff. Maybe four pages on just equestrian.
Did you read it all? The one thing that you got in there is there's the thing where these guys make money, it's on show.
Yes, oh, I think.
And that's not gonna be the same thing with animal husbandry.
I think the commercial stable, equestrian center, from what, what I'm hearing you say, definitely warrants some, some governance. You know, and, and making, from both, from both perspectives. So that the, the owners know what they're allowed to do and there's some consistency. And you know what, what you can, you should be able to expect out of them.
I have a question along the way also. Is there any guidelines, there are, by the size of the critter that we're talking, horse or cow? Okay? For nutrient purposes, they need per quarter acre, per half acre or anything else?
Yeah.
But, but the other thing.
I guess horses need two acres, but four, if there only be seven porches, you know, they're.
But nobody, nobody features four.
I'm just asking the thought, but then the other question is, well, we turned out and had Kate's butter. Okay? We, they turned up putting the barn in, okay? And then all of a sudden, they were gonna have cows, same thing. Nobody came to question on how many cows they were gonna have per acre.
Turned their, uh, four.
Turned their four district.
Just.
Then that's, that's the issue.
And see, the problem is you can have all the cattle and all the milk cows and all the, all the chickens and whatever you want, cause there's no limitation in the R four district. The problem is that there is a limitation on being able to have a riding ring and being able to have horse shows. There, there, that's not allowed under the ordinance. And you don't have, have an equestrian center where you have no riding, no instruction, no, no shows and just make the money in, in raising horses. Unless you're, unless you're doing thoroughbreds, in which case you're not here, you're down with that people or a cell. And that's, that's, that's the issue. That's the problem that they're facing is they're restricted in what they can do.
What's Gilda do?
Gilda doesn't put on shows. She probably does training. She probably boards a couple. I would imagine she boards a couple, but she doesn't have dressage events there. She doesn't, I don't think she really teaches there.
So let, let me ask.
She doesn't have classes with like ten horses going in and running. She didn't take out riddle parties, she didn't, she didn't do trail riding.
So let me ask this, cause I, I have the feeling that we can either do equestrian centers or we can do the fire ordinance, but we can't do both of them and get them ready in time.
Sure.
Well, we need to do one, we need to do that one at a time.
Would you be first, you're asking?
I think the fire ordinance has to be first. And, and if we can get the equestrian ordinance, great.
Equestrian, animal husbandry.
Uh, animal husbandry is still a different animal. Really, seriously, Marty, it's, it's because there's all sorts of different species in there. And quite frankly, the complian committee told us, basically their instructions in their complian was that when we do anything dealing with animal husbandry or farming and or using your land in larger lots in all, all districts, that it's gotta be species specific.
Okay, so we're the cart, we're the cart again?
No, we're not gonna do species specific.
That's where we're gonna be the cart.
Marty, we're always the cart because we have to follow the direction of the land whose ordinance, so we're always the cart.
They haven't handed it to us.
Yeah, they have, it got passed.
That's a species specific?
Yeah, it was in there.
Well, we'll have to go back and tell them that, that won't work.
Well, of course, very honestly, very honestly, guys, you know, there are two schools on, on, on comprehensive planning. One school is that it's the Bible and you shall not deviate from it at all, and the other is it's.
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline, yeah. And then, and, and we, as a planning board, get to make the determination of how we look at that.
I mean, we can become a.
Voters do.
Is that the cart?
Well, to, to Ted's point, the voters actually do it.
No, I'm telling you, we do.
They, they have to approve it all, and if they don't like it, they can reject it. But for our purposes, I think the first thing we need to do is do the fire ordinance. And if we can get through the fire ordinance, then we can work on this. The, we'd have to get through the fire ordinance within the next month, by the end of March, so that we would have some time to look at this.
Oh, I, I agree that fire ordinance should be a priority. I question with, with the, with Mark and his, um, his cattle, what does that thing call this?
Well, that's, that's animal husbandry and I, I would like to work that in with equestrian.
I would too, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put him on.
What I have in mind will take up about one paragraph and a little table.
Well, in, in fairness to, in fairness to this, I mean, because he's talking about adding in.
We have a definition.
Supplement.
We, we don't even have a definition, so.
But your definition's all here, Marty.
Yeah, but no, in the past, you needed a definition first before you could even consider.
We have the definitions to, to work from.
It's all in it, everything's in it, everything you need to do is in it. And the issue of what to do with animal husbandry, and more importantly, what, we're not talking about animal husbandry, we're talking about farming. But what to do with farming, a farming situation, we're not talking about how many chickens do this all in the backyard. We're talking about, hey, before she becomes a nuisance, which is really what animal husbandry issue. The limitations of the five units basically trying to control how many nuisance animals would be in, in a one acre subdivision, basically. What it boils down to. That's why we have animal husbandry.
Two, eight or four.
Doesn't matter.
I know, I know Mrs. Paul, she doesn't have any chickens in her equine.
So fish, she's got ground fish. Uh, she uses the backyard, but the simple farm.
We're gonna do agriculture.
No, that's next, we have to do something for agriculture. But besides that, I mean, and we're really talking about putting farms in, in areas that are zoned for residential where they're not committed.
Right.
It's not, that farms aren't, it's not agri culture. It's that raising cattle or other animals in an R, R one or R two is, and that's the issue.
And I, and I guess the thing that sort of, it, it bothers me and, and you can take a scratch of, of mountain, not mountain, yeah, mountain.
Mountain, yeah.
That is not heavily developed with two acre lots.
Nope.
And, and we're, we're struggling to make a situation work that, you know, is the natural occurrence out there, not the, not the anomaly.
That's true, however, unfortunately in our complian, that's our growth area.
Yeah, we're trying to look at our growth.
In our zoning, in our zoning, it's our growth area.
But if he's gonna, if he's gonna do the land preservation on it, who's gonna put the growth area, huh?
Well, maybe you should talk to your wife about revending the growth area now.
Yeah, but turn it out, I'll. On, on Mount Road, you had one farm there, okay? It used to turn out, it came from about where Andy's Pig Farm was.
Yep.
Okay, all the way including where the Bedford Hospital was. That was over fifteen hundred acres of farm.
It's not now, it's filled with houses.
What was the name of that?
What, Andy's Pig Farm?
No, 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 that, the.
It was.
Who owned that?
Isn't that a Holstein?
Smith? No, I don't know, what was the turn on, it was Tommy Lowndes' grandparents.
That's it, yes. Did that include all the Walmine?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, let's put it this way, including where the hospital was and everything else.
Oh, it's before the.
It came from, it came from Mount Road.
That was a long time before the spur.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it was before I was here.
Oh, yeah.
Everything else.
Thirty years almost.
Okay, so we should, we need to work on that. I'll, I'll come up with some proposals that we can look at, or a proposal that we can look at and we might be able to wrap into this. And then we have the equestrian, but we're gonna do fire first.
We're gonna do fire first. Fire is the more important of the, the three items.
I would also suggest, you know, maybe you might think about design a farmer, just put it the rest that way. And I think another thing to do is an overlay farm, overlay, re-designate an area as a farm zone. No, think about it, think about it. Because then, then, then you have total, then, then you have the control you're looking for without having to farm up a whole bunch of regulations. So this, we designate a farm, overlay a district in an area where you have X number of acres and you could do X, Y, and Z in. And you don't have to come up with all this stuff, then you might be just some basic stuff. But the play where design it, and that's the way you control that non-degree Tom, Dick, and Eric, or a chicken, or a thousand chickens in the backyard. It might be one way of doing it, it's getting them quick.
Yeah, I mean, it takes somebody that has twenty-five acres or twenty acres, whatever you settle on.
Yeah, you're looking west.
You know, you, you apply the zoning as it would be in the R4.
Yeah, you're looking west where they have the blueberries, okay? That's fine.
And they're allowed to do it because it's agricultural. The issue is for animals.
That's why animal.
It's, it's the animal issue, that's always gonna be issues.
Okay.
All right.
Now.
Anything?
Onto the planners report.
All right.
Coming up empty.
I'm coming up empty. That works, we've got, uh, basically have, the other things we've got coming up right now. I have nothing on the, on staff, I've got a whole bunch of, I have a whole bunch of other stuff that's gonna be going up anyway. We'll see how far it goes. I have, and once again, we're trying to fix bad situations. Situations that are either not enforced or let go. They may have to come to you guys. In fact, there's one that they probably will have to come to you guys as well, which will be in the planning way, you know.
For you?
We can, we can take them on.
You can, uh, let's see, one of the things we're doing, um, I don't have any.
Come on, give us some good news.
There's no, there's nothing big, it's going.
Yes, there is. There's one thing that's big.
All right, you tell me, it's a Marty report.
No.
What?
Something that we fought for and finally won.
I won the lottery?
No.
You bought.
Under fire, under fire protection.
Oh.
I heard.
Are they gonna put that hydrant in?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're putting the hydrant. I thought that was.
It's only been seven years.
A month more.
Oh, you didn't know that?
No, I mean, that's important, isn't it?
Yes, it is, I thought that was all good, so I thought.
No.
You knew that, yeah, well, congratulations, yeah, the hydrant's going in. In fact, I heard from Norton the other day, he's gonna be putting it in this room, so there we go, cool.
There's your fire protection, part of it.
What else?
Good job.
Kansas City, you didn't see, probably didn't, Monday night, the selectman instructed the attorney to enter into negotiations with the police. Those judges told us to see if there was a way of settling the issue before going to court. And so the selectman authorized the.
That was in the executive session?
I believe that's what we discussed it.
Well.
But they came out and that was, that was the vote that took. So I wasn't privy to it, I wasn't there, so.
So the court doesn't want to deal with the dealer, huh?
My, my.
The court says basically resolve it, we can resolve it, we'll try it, I'll be angry.
Has he not paid any attention to anything that's been going on the past three years? We've been tried, the judge.
You know.
That's what they always do, they always.
They are, yeah.
I know it in any. You know, even if, even if you've stolen money from your employer and, you know, you want to dispute it, they, they say basically.
Go work it out.
Arbitration. Work it out, go to arbitration and then come back, don't bother with them this until you can't make it. And if you do come back, I'm not gonna be happy. It's basically, it's like, don't make me turn around, don't make me come up there.
That's right, don't make me come up there.
In the planners report, I'm sorry, guys, I don't have anything exciting right now, so.
That's quite.
Where's, uh, where's the use of a cottage?
Same place they've always been.
Right there on Route One?
Yeah, right there and they're working their way in.
They are doing.
Nope.
No, they.
That's right.
No, nothing new. They're supposed to be, they're supposed to be getting you the application for the four units, I still don't have that from Rick. Um, he's concentrating on deadlines, you'll be, you'll be full board, I should have brought it tonight, but I didn't. Uh, you gotta sign the milers for the, uh, hand of, uh, for.
School. We did that last time, you all had milers.
No, we didn't do the school, we did it fill last time.
Okay.
I, I refuse to sign for the school because I don't like it.
You voted for it, so let's. You're on the record, vote for it.
Motion, motion to adjourn?
No, we can't adjourn until we sign.
We can, we can sign them after we adjourn.
No, we can't.
Motion has been made, it's not debatable, it's a straight up and down.
I know, we had.
It's a secretary doesn't take the notes.
I don't care. All those, all those in favor?
Actually, with John, we, we cannot.
I didn't realize that, I thought Ted said he was gonna bring them next time, sorry.
No, unfortunately, if you shut on my doorstep. Four thirty-seven.
You don't even need to. Oh, wait a minute. Is that light there?
Oops.
Under the note.
It's hidden.
He said.
He said, yes, he said. He told me he put it in, I haven't checked.
I don't care. If we sign it and it's not there, then you don't have to do it.
It'd be down there, yeah? We have, it's supposed to be in the notes that it's gonna be installed or.
Maybe on.
It's no match.
Might be on the twenty-five.
How many?
See.
Send it back.
A second.
The, the index isn't here.
Hmm.
You got it?
Straight light.
Site utility. Site utility.
New, straight light, on, utility pole.
Yep, it is here, there you go.
But then it's not reflected on the.
It's not on the, on the lighting.
Doesn't matter, the light, light may not sign, you're signing the, the, the.
We're signing the entire set.
We're signing the entire set. Holy smokes.
How many?
No, you do the.
All the.
Just the cover.
You do the cover sheet. The wilder is in, not with a pan, it's with a miler pan.
No, no.
On this one.
Yes, this one, this one.
If you're doing that. Why you gotta do them now? Did you really have a, a vote, a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Who did it?
Jamie.
Jamie did, who seconded it?
It wasn't.
It wasn't.
It's not supported. It was not supported, you can tell, he had all.
He signed everything.
Milers signed.
Okay, good. So.
All right, well.
Look at this.
Nobody took one once.
It's not like we're gonna.
All right.
So what else we guys want to do?
It's in just, just the three, three signatures, right? Yep.
I'm amazed your wife, John, found three errors in it because I had three people call me all at the same time.
A lot of guests. It was right there, is it underneath?
Is that one there?
That was on the floor.
Is that the miler pin?
No, John has.
John's got.
The fat one. That one and this one, honey. And then the miler.
By the way, your tax office is gonna have to buy me a new set of flat files because I'm almost.